What a difference how to love me in my life, so nice and so right. Love has come and been love before, that's what the people say. Don't they know that I'm there when you love me? And hold me and say you care. And what we have is much more than they can see. And what we have is much more than they can see. Baby, what we have is much more than they can see. Oh baby, whoa, oh yeah. I'm in, I'm in, I'm in, I'm in love, I'm in love with you girl. I said, love, I never knew that a touch could mean, could mean so much. What a difference, and when we walk hand in hand, I feel, I feel so real. Love has come and been love before, that's what the people say. Don't they know that I'm there when you love me? And hold me and say you care. And what we have is much more than they can see. Is what we have is much more than they can see. And what we have is much more than they can see. Oh, oh yeah.
Which one?
Reginald.
Okay, we're ready?
They don't want to be present.
We're nice.
Well, that's good, that's... Want me to go?
Yeah, I see.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the regular board meeting of Tarrant County College District. It's a beautiful afternoon, it's been a great day in the neighborhood. And welcome all of you, we just had reviews of our candidates. And first order of business is public comment. Yes, John Fanning, you can talk again if you want to, but you don't have to, but...
Do you like to hear my voice?
No, I don't have any cards, does anybody want to make a public comment? I don't see any, so I guess we won't. Our next activity is to consideration and action to appoint a trustee. We just did an interview for the information of the board members after we had a public discussion about the candidates, if any. We're going to be following what Angela Robinson calls Rule 400 of Robert's Rules of Order, comma, as amended, the short version. And we will be getting some ballots, and we don't have a ballot, we have a piece of paper, we're gonna write it down on the pad in front of you, the person you two vote for. I will be, I can go ahead and appoint, I'm going to appoint Reginald Gates and Angela as tellers, is that correct? I'm gonna, and we're gonna vote, we're gonna put them down, but not now, and then we're gonna hand these pieces of paper to the tellers. They're going to count the votes, and then one of the tellers is gonna give me the result. And that's about the process. And the candidates decided that they did not want to be in here to hear our public discussion. Quite frankly, I think this is kinda awkward when you do a, when you're interviewing an employee, you usually are in a room and you just kind of talk about them. But do we have any comments from discussion about the election of the two candidates? We've heard from them, they both have business acumen, public activities, they're very excellent. And of course, we appreciate their coming and applying and sticking their necks out in front of us. But I would welcome discussion, we're in a public forum here, and so... Do I hear anything? No discussion? Well, I guess we'll vote. Oh, yeah.
Put the initials?
Put your initial.
Yes.
While we're waiting, I will, I will tell you about what I think is a divine thing that happened to the governance committee before we met at the ACT conference in Dallas last week. We sat, Angela and I were sitting across a table in the lobby of the hotel from a group from Pasadena, California Community College. And the week before, they had just gone through the same thing. And we had the same process they did, absolutely the same process. They gave us some ideas, one of the things, were we gonna give questions beforehand? And the answer was no, we didn't do that. But we had done the same process that they did, and they were very successful in doing it. They had, they had two meetings, because it was a three-three vote for two nights in a row. And so, I don't know if that was gonna happen here or not. But we were very, very lucky to, I think it was a divine thing to see those people at that, that meeting.
We do have a majority for Mr. Heed. We have William Greenhill for Mr. Heed, Louise Appleman, Gwen Morrison, and Kristen Vandergriff for Mr. Heed. For Dennis Schlechter, we have Robin Winnett and O.K. Carter.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to change my vote for Mr. Heed.
Okay. Nope, thank you, okay. So I will declare that Mr. Heed is an elected board member of the Tarrant County College. And congratulations, he's not here, but I think his, maybe his wife is still in here, but congratulations. Yeah, where is he, is he here? I don't know if they left or something? Oh, yeah, I'm gonna... Oh, yeah, both of them. Again, we thank you for, both of you for coming. Mr. Heed has won the election, but thank you both for coming and being a part of this process. What happens next is that I have asked the staff, Reginald Gates is gonna be your hero for the next month. And you know who, Mr. Gates is going, what we're gonna do is, I've asked him to, we're gonna have a, try to get a formal orientation process. We're going to develop a little handbook to tell you about the college and certain things that you may or may not know at this time. I think it'd be important, if you have time, to take a tour of each campus, to get to know these wonderful people. The people that are in front of you are the, is the Celt, the chancellor's leadership... Executive leadership team, the executive leadership team, they come to every meeting to stay abreast of what's going on and to make presentations. I made a tour of each campus, and it really gives you a feel for each one of them. You will meet with the president, you'll have a tour of what they do, and then I will, you've been out to Alliance and to the, to the community centers for others. So you will be at the next meeting sworn in and bring a, you could, a notary, anybody that can notarize a document. My secretary, who's my boss for 30 years, swore me in, and I brought my wife and friends and so forth. But anyone who can notarize a document, I think that's true, it can be a judge, it can be a notary, but somebody that probably a good friend for a long time who can swear you in. But it's a big deal, and we welcome you to the board. And Dennis, thank you so much, excellent presentation, excellent credentials, it's nothing personal. It's, at least you didn't have to go through an election. And flipping the coin is much easier, you know, than going through an election, I guarantee you that, but thank you very much. Now the work is gonna begin for you. And you'll also, we'll, you know, we gotta appoint committees and so forth and so on, and I'll be, I'll be in touch with you very soon, probably tomorrow. We're now going to have a presentation on student success, access and success in administrative programs and projects on the Northeast Campus. Dr. Darlich.
Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me?
Mr. President, it was absolutely a wonderful day in the neighborhood. The neighborhood, the neighborhood, that's the song I sang when we were there to cut the ribbon and dedicate the facility for our Northeast Campus, we call it the Halton City Northeast Center. And Dr. Larry Darlich, under his great leadership, worked with the people of Halton City to bring that to a successful opening, and as the title on your paper says tonight, it takes off. We are so very pleased to have with us this evening, as Dr. Darlich does his presentation with his staff, the mayor of Halton City, Mayor Richard Hutchinson, mayor was very, stand up, mayor, take a bow. Stand up and let us see you, we appreciate it. And the person who I understand was the main brainchild of this program is Councilwoman Darlene Hooks. Councilwoman, would you stand and take a bow? So welcome to both of you, and what you're about to hear is an example of a true partnership. Dr. Darlich.
President Greenhill, board members, Chancellor Hadley. It's a, it's a pleasure to have the Northeast Campus present this program tonight about the Halton City Northeast Center, which is a really good example of student access and success. And in addition to Darlene, who was a brainchild, the person who kind of took the ball, I passed the ball to very quickly, was Dr. Jackie Washington. And Dr. Washington has been a doctor for only a couple of months, so that's why I'm emphasizing the doctor part. She just completed her doctorate from Texas A&amp;M. And so I'd like to have Jackie come forward now and do the program.
Chairman and the board, it is a great day to be here, to tell you about this wonderful program. It has been really exciting for us, it has been a whirlwind experience for me, but we have done a wonderful thing. I'm so happy the Halton City people are here to share this tonight. Before I do our presentation, I would be remiss if I did not introduce Mr. Hank Johnson, who is the coordinator of that center, who has really been instrumental in making sure that classes are there, successful. We have our computers up and running, he has been running the day-to-day operations, and I want to personally thank you in front of everybody, and I appreciate all the hard work you've done.
Mr. Johnson, come around where all board members can see you, you have to take a bow, this is a real interesting...
He deserves it, he deserves it.
Come on, come on around, come on, come on down. This way, this way, just stand over there, and then you can go back that direction, we want everybody to see you. Well, thank you very much.
And with that, we have a short presentation to show you the center that, maybe you have not seen, but is a beautiful center. And with that, Ms. Shelley.
I just wanna thank you for establishing the Halton City Campus of Tarrant County College. It is, in my case, very convenient, it saves me time and money, and I don't have to walk very far to classes. That's a real plus for someone my age. More importantly than that, I wanna thank you for the staff you've chosen for that location. The staff, the whole staff, office staff and instructors are outstanding, they could not be more helpful.
Everyone there is there to see to it that we have what we need in the classroom, that we're able to sign up for our classes if we're computer challenged, they help us with that end of it. They meet any need we have, they write letters to Tarrant County workforce for us if that's what we need. And in my case, I have an instructor who couldn't be better. She, she can figure out what my question is, even when I don't know how to ask her. She, if we just so much as sigh, she jumps right in and says, okay, who needs help? She figures out what we need, answers it for us, shows us how to go back and find it for ourselves. I don't think we could ask for more than that. I just, it's just an outstanding experience for me, and I thank you so much for this campus.
One of the advantages of instructing here at TCC Northeast is, in this particular...
we're starting to feel growing pains, so it's really been a success, I'd like to thank everyone and help the board, as well as Halton City for making this happen, the students are really excited, and we're hearing a lot of positive and good feedback, thank you.
Now I'd like for the mayor and Darlene, if you would come forward, I think they wanna say a few words.
Well, good evening, it is a great day in the neighborhood, and I'd like to sing it with you, but I'm not near as good at it as you are, Dr. Hadley, welcome, thank you for welcoming us here. Mr. Green, distinguished board members, thank you for allowing us to have a center in Halton City, and congratulations, Mr. Heath, and one of the first places that I hope that they, that Mr. Gates will take you is to our Halton City Northeast TCC Center, because it is a great facility. It was a partnership between Tarrant County College, the Economic Development Corporation, and the city of Halton City that brought this partnership together, it was an idea that started with my colleague Darlene Hooks and the former mayor, Bill Lanford, that went to Doc, to Dr. Darlich and said, eh, we'd like to do something with this facility, we feel like that Halton City could benefit Tarrant County College. And the last thing that I remember Dr. Hadley saying when we did the cut, the ribbon cutting was, we're still looking for more facilities too, so we're looking around Halton, I took that to heart, and I'm looking around Halton City continuously. All agreed that there couldn't have been a better use of our old library than this off-site campus for Tarrant County College, it's advantageous to businesses, it's advantageous to students, and especially our citizens in Halton City. We've already experienced some positive feedback, since the first day of classes, students have expressed their appreciation to the, to the TCC Board and to the TCC staff for offering classes and giving them the opportunity to continue their education while improving their quality of life, right there in Halton City, and this is only the beginning, as interest and demand continues, as you, as you have already heard. As the mayor, I personally appreciate the TCC Board of Trustees for their efforts in this cooperative project, and look forward to many more successes in, in working with TCC. I've been a part-time and adjunct instructor at TCC for twenty-eight years, and I know how important this is for some of the, for the, some of the students, so as an employee also, not just as the mayor, but as an employee also, I know how this, important this is, and I highly recommend anyone who wants to sign up for courses to come to the TCC Halton Center, Northeast Center, thank you.
Good evening, I am so proud to be here and be able to say thank you, not just from me, but from our city council, from the Economic Development Corporation, from all the citizens and the students that are coming to TCC in Halton City. I think, you know, we concentrate on our citizens, just like you concentrate on your students, but I realize that this is gonna reach farther than just Halton City, we have a lot of neighborhoods around us that will also be enjoying this center, and I, I received an email from other students, and she was in the video, and I brought you each a copy because, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but I just wanted you to kind of hear a little bit more about what she said, and it, it made me feel so good, just for being a part of this, it's such a wonderful thing for Halton City, and for me personally, because this is my third year on the city council, and I can tell you, I've never seen so much agreement on anything as I have at opening this center. I mean, everyone, from citizens to the staff, is just in such agreement that this is one of the best things that's happened in a long time, so I'm gonna read a little bit of her email, and this is from Donna Oswald, like I said, she was in the video, says, Dear Mrs. Hooks, thank you so much for advocating the establishment of this as a satellite location for Tarrant County College, it is a real blessing to me in several ways, it is closer to my home, which saves me both time and money, I don't have to walk so far to class, and though I'm not disabled, the heat and the long walk this summer was difficult to handle. The Tarrant County staff at Hal, at the Halton City location is superb, everyone is friendly, cheerful, and encouraging at a difficult time in my life. I'm including the below statements about the TCC staff, because I want you to know that if someone can get the word out to all of Halton City and the nearer part of Riverside and Northside, Fort Worth, and even Saginaw, the TCC staff of this location will cause this site to continue to thrive. Mr. Johnson is a fine leader of a great team, he has, he is determined to see that the facility has what is needed. Janelle Cardenas, my instructor is very sensitive to our needs and does whatever is needed to meet them, she goes above and beyond to be sure we get signed up correctly and in a timely manner, and get the right books, her cheerful smile, kind voice, and encouraging words make us want to come to class. Lisa is our front desk person, and she is very cheerful, all the time, all the time, she takes a note of anything we need for the classroom, and quickly reports them to the appropriate person to get the problem solved. All of the above is to say how very much I appreciate your doing all that it took to make this campus possible for us, thank you, Donna Oswald. And I believe she's actually here in the audience too, and you met her. I know you know how thrilled I was to receive this email, and why I wanted to share it with you, so again, thank you for giving the citizens of Halton City this opportunity, and for the great partnership that we have, and I'm gonna pass these out, I'll bring them to you and you can pass them down.
Thank you, councilperson. There are a couple other people that were really instrumental in, in helping this go, and they are the city manager, who is here, Tom Muir, right there, and the assistant city manager, Chuck Barnett, Chuck? So that concludes our presentation, thank you, any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I met recently with a group in Arlington that their idea was to sell TCC a four-million-dollar empty little shipping center, shopping center, and I told them about the Halton City model, they weren't thrilled, you know, which I think we release it for about a dollar a year, something like that, I like this model very much, and I, and, well, you have a community that's willing to meet us, to help us out, because we're gonna, we have a substantial investment in this, even with the, the building, and I like this model very much, and I'm hoping some other communities take it to heart and, and come to us, because I, I think this really works, brings education to where the people are and where they need it.
And so Mr. Heath's first project will bring DFW into the, of Bill Gates achieving the dream, yeah.
I just wanted to let you know that Mayor Hutchinson, of course, is a faculty member, a part-time faculty member at Northeast, and he's been there for twenty-eight years.
Is he government teacher, I was gonna ask him?
Yes, I think.
Government.
History, history.
Oh, history.
But he, he will be teaching a history course at the Halton Center, starting this spring, so.
I'll ask one more question, what kind of, which, which history? American, world?
Anything that you can think of.
Okay, everything, world history, okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is approval of the, to approve the minutes, do we have any comments on the, the minutes that were passed out to you? Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as written? Please?
Move to approve.
Move to approve, is there a second? Second? Okay, all in favor say aye? Aye? Any opposed? None? So, we're going to go now to here, we're gonna talk about the changing of our election dates, and we have Tom Carr here and Jesse Gaines back here again to talk to us about changing our election dates from even to odd years? Oh no, I'm sorry, and, and, Mr. Carr, you have the podium.
I'm here, basically, we've discussed this a couple of times, and no sense in me going on unless there are specific questions that the board might have, you have a resolution, I think, before you, which sets out the, the possibility of modifying your election, your trustee election date, I think it's, I think it's a worthwhile resolution, I think the chaos, the confusion, and the expense of staying in your current election cycle is, it will be so great that it's, it's gonna be worth this, this body's effort to move your election date to your, to the odd years.
Well, you know this question's coming, do we have, unequivocally, do we have the authority to change it from, from an even, from an odd to, from an even to an odd year?
Yes, you do.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I've gotten that, not only, you know, from my reading of the statutes and the Senate bill, but also from the Secretary of State of this, the state, which is basically responsible for the election process within the state.
Yes, it's all perfectly clear, isn't it?
Not, not exactly, no, sir, no, sir, it's not clear.
I understand, that's why you make the big bucks, I understand, yeah, it's, it's a hard process, thank you very mu, Mr. Ga, Mr. Gaines.
Also that I did, Tom and I have talked about this extensively, is that whether or not even as early as, as this week, we were still talking about making sure that the board had the authority, and based on all the information that we were able to obtain, the board do have the authority to make this decision.
Well, I'm not asking for, based on the, I just, you just tell me we have the authority to do this, and I'm gonna rely on it.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a proposed resolution, where is it? Thank you very much, I'm sorry, any questions? No questions, thank you. You can sit down now, we'll have a...
Do they have the resolution?
We have a resolution, oh, you hand it to me? Mr. Carter, are you our reader?
Yeah, I think it's dead on the screen.
Oh, you have it on the screen, okay, all right, so you're our reader?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
May I, sir?
I'd like to make a resolution, if I might.
You might, you're our, you're our reader.
All right, whereas during the regular session of the eighty-second legislative session, Senate bill SB 100 was adopted, this law has placed a great burden on the resources that might be available to be used by the Tarrant County Colleges to conduct the district's trustee elections if they were held on a uniform election day in May of even number of years. Whereas, the Board of Trustees wishes to avoid the potential significant increase in costs that might befall the district should continue to conduct its trustee elections on the uniform election days in May of even number of years. Whereas, the Texas Secretary of State has determined that section forty-one point zero zero five two parentheses A, Texas Election Code, authorizes the Board of Trustees of the Tarrant County College District, which conduct their trustee elections on the May election date in even number of years, to order a change in the date of trustees' elections to another uniform election date as necessary to provide access to Tarrant County election equipment and services. Be it resolved and ordered, that the Board of Trustees of the Tarrant County Colleges hereby elect to, one, move its trustee elections from the uniform election in May of even number of years to the uniform election days in May of odd number of years, two, modify the term of each trustee to accomplish the changes in election years as follows, A, terms of office for trustees in single-member district six and single-member district seven shall be extended to the uniform election date in May two thousand, or twenty thirteen. Continue resolution and order modifying trustee election dates, yep, the term of office for trustees in single-member district one, single-member district two, and single-member district three shall be extended to the uniform election date in May twenty fifteen, C, the term of office for trustees in single-member district four and single-member district five shall be extended to the uniform election date in May twenty seventeen, each term, trustee term thereafter shall be for six years, and the district shall make these modifications necessary to college district policies to accomplish the change set out in this order.
Thank you, you're well...
You're welcome.
You're well, well done.
Shall I read again?
No, you have, you have another opportunity coming up to read another resolution, so we'll, we'll let it in there. Do we have any discussion, we've discussed this several times, any other further discussion? Well, you've, you've made the motion, because you read the resolution, is there a second?
Second.
Second, I miss Vandergriff, any discussion? All in favor say aye? Aye? Any opposed? None? Okay, guys, we have another year. Thank you, now we're going to, seven, where at, seven? Consent agenda, I understand that, is there anybody want to take something off these consent agenda to discuss it? And you wanna...
Mr. Greenhill, yes, I'd like to remove item number seven from consideration at all at this board meeting. Items, I'm sorry, seven F.
Seven F?
Yes, sir, seven F.
That is, seven F is consideration approval on change order to CF Jordan Construction on construction of Southeast Campus New Interest Road, the chancellor recommends withdrawing that from the agenda, do we need a motion on that? No, so we'll just take that off the consent agenda. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the matters on the consent agenda?
Move approval.
And that's, Ms. Appleman gives a move for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay, all in favor say aye? Aye? Any opposed? None? Now we have a committee reports, the Finance and Audit Committee did not meet, the Governance Committee did meet on several occasions, mostly to figure out how we're gonna do the election. At one of the committee meetings, we discussed revising our procurement policies to, to make it more clear as to when documents or contracts and procurement items need to be brought to the attention of the board, and the Governance Committee is going to recommend that, and okay, Carter, would you like to say, I'm gonna give you this recommended?
Well, as you know, we've, there's been quite a bit of discussion about contracts, and particularly, you know, professional service contracts, those sort of things, and, you know, to make it as simple as possible, I think basically, we decided probably we need to, here we go, I know, I know, well, I'm gonna explain a little bit first, which is that essentially, we need to, as a board, approve the purchasing manual for the college, and so that we can see any major modifications to it, that probably we need to see all contracts...
I understand that... Is anybody want to take something off these consent agenda to discuss it?
Mr. Greenhill, yes, I'd like to remove item number seven from consideration at all at this board meeting.
Seven.
I'm sorry, 7F.
7F?
Yes, sir. 7F.
That is, 7F is consideration approval on change order to CF Jordan Construction on construction of Southeast Campus New Interest Road. The chancellor recommends withdrawing that from the agenda. Do we need a motion on that? No, so we'll just take that off the consent agenda. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the matters on the consent agenda?
Move approval.
And that's Ms. Appleman gives a move for approval? Is there a second? Second? Okay. All in favor say aye. Aye? Any opposed? None? Now, we have a committee reports. The Finance and Audit Committee did not meet. The Governance Committee did meet on several occasions, mostly to figure out how we're going to do the election. At one of the committee meetings, we discussed revising our procurement policies to make it more clear as to when documents or contracts and procurement items need to be brought to the attention of the board. And the Governance Committee is going to recommend that. And, okay, Carter, would you like to say... I'm going to give you this recommended...
Well, as you know, we've... There's been quite a bit of discussion about contracts, and particularly, you know, professional service contracts, those sort of things. And, you know, to make it as simple as possible, I think, basically, we decided probably we need to... Here we go. Well, I'm going to explain a little bit first.
Oh, yeah.
Which is that essentially, we need to, as a board, approve the purchasing manual for the college, and so that we can see any major modifications to it, that probably we need to see all contracts of $100,000 or more, and normally, they'll be on the consent agenda. I mean, that's the general gist of our understanding, so that we have constant awareness of major contracts. And I think $100,000 sounds like a lot, but as we pointed out, you know, we can do $20,000 or $30,000 on our air conditioning system, so... But all major items, and those are... We're talking in terms of, you know, annual agreements, not one time, one month, and one to next, so that's what we're basically looking at. So, I guess, Mr. President, is there any further discussion about that?
Yeah, let's talk... We could talk about it. Kristin, you were part of the... Part of the meeting, and... Or anybody else want to discuss this matter?
You know, this... I can read this motion, but I suspect it's something that the other board members would like to think about, and maybe have a little bit more extensive briefing.
Sure.
Than this. So, you know, I'll make the motion, if you like, but, you know, Ms. Appleman, for example, is looking for a more specific agenda item about this.
It's fine with me, yeah.
It's not in our packet, is it? This motion and the background on it isn't in our packet. But they're going to make a motion to...
We can take action on Governance Committee. I'm not going to fight that. We'll just table it and do it later on. But it's just an idea that we wanted to do, we're not trying to push it on anybody, we'll just...
I just think it'd be helpful before we're asked to take action on an item, if we had some background.
Okay.
You know, a report from the committees that are submitting the recommendation.
Yeah, we just didn't have really a lot of time. That's a good idea, because we just... It was an idea that we had at the last meeting, and... Okay, are you going to do the report?
I would be happy to. How would we...
Probably next time.
How would we submit that without getting into the area of...
No, what you do is, you make a report on behalf of, like, on the Audit Committee. What I do is, is I draft a report and say what we discussed and recommendations, the policies that we would like to do, and just, well, at the next meeting, that report will be submitted in part as a package, so people can look at it.
I think that's the way to do it. Yes, sir, I'll do that.
Yes, sir, okay. All right. Thank you, Louise, I'm glad that you said that, because I... We didn't want to... We just needed to...
Well, I'm looking at the motion, it's really just to advise the chancellor to develop a policy for inclusion in our manual, I guess. But I would ask for, you mentioned some figures in your presentation.
Yes.
Yeah, we're going to...
I'd like to see some, sort of, an outline.
Yeah.
But then, it looks like it's going to be left to staff to...
Yeah, but it'll be a policy that we'll draft and bring to you, and those numbers will be in there. So, there will be time to discuss it at that point, and change anything you want. The whole idea is to make sure that the board is always cognizant of any changes that are made to the purchasing policies. That's really all this about.
Okay. So, there's no action to come out of the Governance Committee, no committee recommendations at this time. Now, we're going to discuss consideration and action on a resolution on taxation of goods and transit, which I think is required by law. Mrs. Hadley and Mr. McLendon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to call for Mark McLendon, our CFO, to come to the podium and explain this item. I compliance on it, it is.
Good evening, Chancellor, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board of Trustees, it's always a pleasure to be with you all. This item comes about because in the year 2007, this board approved the utilization of not having a credit, so that means you're able to tax people on goods and transit, all right? Now, what Senate Bill Number 1 did is it reverted that law. So, in order for that law to come back, it has to... The board has to approve this in an open meeting, and this is exactly what this item is about. So, if the board does approve it, we need you to read that resolution.
Tell me again, the benefit of us doing this?
I would be most happy to explain that.
The one thing, did you all hear what he said? He said "y'all." He's a real Texan there.
My daughter, who's now working in New York, or, I mean, she's studying in New York, she says, "I can see that now you have a Texas drawl," so you are... You're very correct in pointing that out. The necessity, or the why the district is recommending to you, there's approximately $1 billion in goods and transit. So, that turns out, more or less, to represent 1.2... 1.353 million dollars that we would forego in revenue. The district recommends that we do pass that, so that we do not give that credit, and we are able to get that revenue.
Excellent.
All right.
Thank you, Mr... Any questions for Mr. McLendon? Thank you, Mr. McLendon. Well done.
I think I saw the city of Colleyville just took the same action.
Yes, sir, everybody is doing... The statute of limitations says that if we do not do this, you have till the end of December, and then it goes into effect automatically if you don't... If the board does not accept it.
Take positive action, it's a proactive thing we have to do.
Yes, sir, you have to read that resolution, or somebody has to read that resolution. Thank you.
Mr. Carter, are you our reader?
I'm not even finding it, sir. Where's the resolution?
It's right here. I'm sending it down.
He's got it. He's got it. Does this pay, this resolution-reading thing? All right, I'd like to make a resolution.
You're going to pay the big bucks.
Whereas, the 82nd Texas Legislature in regular session has modified House Bill 621 from the 2007 Legislative Session as Senate Bill 1 to take effect on January 1, 2012, which limits the exemption by making only applicable to goods that are stored in a public warehouse facility, which are not owned by the person who owns the good, and... Whereas, Texas Tax Code 11.253-J, as amended, allows the governing body of a taxing unit after conducting a public hearing to provide for the continued taxation of such goods and transit. And whereas, the Board of Trustees of the Tarrant County College District, having conducted a public hearing as required by Section 1 hyphen N, parentheses, D, Article 8, Texas Constitution, is of the opinion that it is in the best interest of the district to continue to tax such goods and transit. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees for the Tarrant County College District that the goods and transit, as defined in Texas Tax Code 11.253, parentheses, A, parentheses, 2, as amended by Senate Bill 1 enacted by the 82nd Texas Legislature in regular session, shall remain subject to taxation by the Tarrant County College District.
Again, well done.
Such eloquence.
You know, I... Any discussion about this? I don't think there is any discussion. You've made the motion, and do I hear a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? None? Okay, we're going to have the monthly financial report from Mark McLendon being entered. I guess you introduce him, and...
He's ready.
He's ready.
Mark? Are you on microphones, please?
All right. What we do every month is, we compare the yearly expenditures by dividing the total expense for a period, dividing it by 12, and then we look at anything that would show a little bit higher than we are trailing. Mr. Vick and myself, we wanted to recognize, stand there, since Mrs. Chang is on vacation. We have gone through every single item, and we've looked at any item that would be more than 8%. When we looked at this, we noticed that most of the things, when you see them, that they're higher than 8%, is simply because we've encumbered for the whole year. So, that's, for example, if you looked at... Take, for example, mail and telephone. You see that? If you look at that, that number is showing 71%, which would be inconceivable, that you would use 71% in the first month. What that means is, we take in the total budget, and it is... We have the... For the whole year, and it's shown in there, or that part of it, we've got a PO that encumbers that amount, and that's why that number doesn't mean that we are over. The correct exercise, or the good thing, is that we're looking at every item that goes beyond that, and we do that every month for you, all right? Is there any questions on any line item that you all would like to discuss? All right? Okay, now, we can move to the investments. Happy to say that our investments are doing very well. We're actually, if you look at the two sales there of the $10 million, if you look at FNMA and FHLMC, what that means is, they have been recalled. And the reason why they're being recalled is because we have such an excellent interest rate, which is 1.7. In the market today, you're looking at 0.5 or something like that. So, that has been something that our staff has done real good diligence, to be able to get as much long-term in these challenging times. If we look at the total spread for the 12 weeks, it's about 0.67, and for the 24 weeks, it's 0.63. Any questions on our investments? Well...
I don't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
I skipped an item. We need to go to item 12, which is consideration and action on a proposed institutional naming policy that we... Was proposed before, not proposed before, we discussed in our last meeting, and chancellor?
Thank you, Mr. Greenhill, and board members. Dr. Joe McIntosh, who's the executive director of our Tarrant County College Foundation, is here to answer any questions that you may have about the naming policy that we discussed with you last month. We ask you to take a look at that and give us any input for changes, as you saw fit. We have received no changes at this point, and we are ready to ask you to adopt a policy with the full understanding that it can be amended as we move forward. From time to time, we have people who have shown some interest in making contributions to the college, in return, having recognition for their contributions in one way or another. We have one that is pretty eminent right now, who is wanting to give us a contribution and have something named in his honor. So, this naming policy will allow us to move forward with that, and Dr. McIntosh will be able to answer any questions about it that you may have.
Mr. McIntosh?
Your microphone, please.
Chancellor, President of the Board, Mr. Greenhill, and Trustees, I will correct my chancellor, there has been one slight change that was requested in the review, and that is on a, I believe, a redline copy that you do have, just a very slight modification, but in substance, the policy is as was presented this last month.
Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Joe McIntosh? Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, this was explained to us in detail at the last meeting. Do we have any discussion about it?
Move approval.
Move approval? Is there a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Hear none? Motion passed. We're now going to go into the chancellor's report, but, before we start the chancellor's report, we went to an ACCT conference. No, we went to a superhero matter the other night, the other day, at the North Texas Commission, and our distinguished chancellor got an award, and it was a superhero award. Also, I heard rumor that she had been invited to and had accepted to go into an airplane, I mean, a jet tomorrow, at the Alliance Air Show. I got the same invitation, but I declined because I get sick in a teacup, twirling around at the Disney World. But I wanted you to know that, you know, I was going to give her this cape. This is the cape that she got. And I'm not going to put it around her shoulders, I'm going to put it... This is a superhero... I'm sorry, you can't hear me. This is a superhero cape that she got. We're very proud of her. She got the... What was it? It was the soup... It was a...
Superhero.
Superhero, the North Texas Commission, a couple of weeks ago, and this is the cape that she... Oh, wait a minute. This is the cape that she got. I borrowed it from the table. There were... I think you've got one of your own, but I promised that I would embarrass you tonight, so I'm going to give you this, and let's give some congratulations to our chancellor for her award. I'm sorry, I...
That's fine, thank you, Mr. Greenhill. I just want everybody to know, when I put this on, I really become magical, so y'all watch out. See me running around here with my red cape on?
I would have liked to have seen you in that fighter jet. I mean, no way.
Thank you, Mr. Greenhill. I am going to start my report with new staff introductions. We're always very pleased to introduce new people to the Tarrant County College family, and also to present people who are operating in new roles for us, for various reasons. And Dr. Joy Gates Black, who is the interim president of the South Campus, is out of town tonight, standing in for me at a meeting that I was scheduled to attend in Detroit. And so, she's asked Dr. Jo K. Bagley to come in her stead tonight and present to our people, one is new, and one is in a new role. Dr. Bagley is our vice president for our teaching and learning, a longtime staff member with us, who does an absolutely outstanding job, and I know she's pleased to be able to introduce her two new colleagues. Dr. Bagley?
Thank you, President Greenhill, and members of the board, and Chancellor Hadley. This is an absolute delight to introduce two members of our South Campus learning community. First of all, Ms. Althea Gaston. Ms. Gaston is right here. Ms. Gaston is a graduate of Stillman College in the University of West Alabama, where she earned a Master's of Education degree in English. She has postgraduate hours in English from UTA and graduate hours toward her doctorate in Educational Leadership from the University of Phoenix. Ms. Gaston came to TCC in 2004 as an instructor of English, and prior to that time, she had experience as a middle school teacher in both Alabama and at Forest Ridge Middle School in Fort Worth, which happens to be the South Campus Adopt a School. So, she was well-prepared to articulate to Tarrant County College. And then, in 2007, we saw some of her flexibility, because she discontinued teaching English and started teaching education in our new AAT degree program. For the past three summers, she worked in Dr. Fay Murphy's office as a coordinator of curriculum development projects overseeing these summer projects, which has become a very productive activity for Tarrant County College. Now, she has been promoted to Dean of Business and Behavioral Sciences, and I'm also proud to offer her my congratulations as the South Campus winner of the chancellor's award for exemplary teaching this year. I'm very proud to introduce to you Dean Althea Gaston.
You get to say hello.
Hello? I am thankful to be here. I did not know I would say something, but it has been an honor to work at TCC. I tell people this all the time, and I'll keep it short and sweet, there's not ever a day that I don't want to go to work at TCC. I love my job, I love serving students, and I'm thankful for this opportunity.
Next, I would like to introduce Dr. Jerry Hutira. He is our new dean of Technology and Social Sciences. Dr. Hutira came to TCC with more than 30 years of higher education experience. He served both as a faculty member and as an administrator. He has degrees from Tarleton State University, Texas A&amp;M at Commerce, and UNT. His doctorate is in Higher Education Applied Technology, Training and Development, and Cognition and Technology. At Texas State Technical College in Waco, Jerry served as a faculty member in electronics, he served as a department chair, and as a coordinator of curriculum, and his last job there was as a project manager and curriculum specialist. there was as a project manager and curriculum specialist. He also retired from the Air Force Reserve after 20 years of service. I'm very proud to introduce you to Dr. Dean Jerry Hutira.
Thank you, Dr. Bagley. It's a pleasure for me to be here tonight with you, and I appreciate the opportunity to address this meeting of the Regents, Chairman Greenhill, and also the members of the board, and also you, Chancellor Hadley. I thank you for the opportunity to serve you in the capacity that I am as a dean. It's a pleasure working for you. I especially want to thank Dr. Bagley and also Dr. Joy Gates Black for the opportunity to work with them and the school. You have a wonderful, wonderful district, a wonderful school, and I hope that it continues to grow, and I'm hoping to be a member and be there with you to help it. I sincerely thank you, and God bless y'all.
And now I'll call for Reginald Gates, who has a member of his team who is in a new role. Reginald.
Thank you, Chancellor, Mr. President and Board. I have the pleasure of introducing, or more so presenting, Ms. Deion Jones, who serves as the Director of Grants Compliance for us. Having served the district for over 12 years, Ms. Jones has experience in developing, writing, implementing, and evaluating public and private grants. Also during her tenure at TCC, she has managed over $5.5 million of local, state, federal, and private funding supporting workforce development initiatives to include youth and adult education programs, and programs for the unskilled and underemployed. Deion also serves TCC as an adjunct faculty in the Sociology Department on the Northeast Campus. Ms. Jones has served the district as an Assistant Special Projects Coordinator, a Special Projects Coordinator, and a Foundation Development Coordinator. Deion received her Bachelor of Arts degree from Spelman College and her Master's degree from Texas Southern University. Currently, Deion is a candidate for the Doctorate of Education in Higher Education Leadership at Texas A&amp;M Commerce. Committed to furthering the potential of others through education and service, Ms. Jones is a member of the Texas Association of Black Professionals in Higher Education, The Links Incorporated, the Junior League of Fort Worth, and a graduate of the Leadership of Texas Class 2010. I present Deion Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chancellor, members of the board. I am excited about my new position. I literally started my grant career here at Tarrant County College in the Office of Corporate Services. I moved on into workforce services where I honed my skills, and I just look forward to sharing all that I know, both in theory and practice, when it comes to successful grantsmanship. Thank you.
And now Angela Robinson has two people to present, one new, one in a new role.
Thank you, Madam Chancellor, board. First, I'm going to present Captain Sean Williams. Captain Williams was with the Arlington Police Department. His last position there was with Internal Affairs, and he was there for 20 years before he went to Dallas County Community College. He started with Tarrant County College in July of 2009 and worked his way up from Lieutenant at Southeast Campus. To when I got here, he was the interim chief and has been appointed now the Chief of Police for Tarrant County College. I present to you Captain Williams.
Madam Chancellor, Mr. President, members of the board, I would just like to say it was truly an honor to be selected as Chief of Police for the Tarrant County College District, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you.
Next, we have a new employee. Teri O'Neil Ford is a new paralegal who's going to be working with me. She has an extensive background. She has done open records at the City of Dallas. Thank you. She's worked for a paral—as a paralegal for approximately 18 years. She worked in the Dallas City Attorney's Office for five years. She's been an instructor in paralegal studies at two colleges, and she is currently working on her doctoral. So I present to you Teri O'Neil Ford.
Thank you. It is a pleasure to be here. Thank you for the opportunity extended to address you as a board and to the Chancellor. I am very excited about working with Ms. Robinson. I have accepted the mission of the district and mission committed to institutional effectiveness. I know this is an ongoing process that takes commitment to self-improvement, self-evaluation, and an unending pursuit of excellence. So thank you.
Well, thank you to all of our new staff and to all of our staff in new roles. Thank you very much. Chief, I'll have to decide if I should call you Captain Williams or Chief Williams. I've been calling you chief all the time. Thank you. And our board members, I am very pleased to highlight just a few. I hope you have time—excuse me. I hope you take time—I know everybody is busy—to read the campus accolades that we send to you every month, because it gives you an opportunity to see so many of the wonderful things that are going on around the district. And I want to thank the Presidents and David Wells for sharing all this wonderful information with me so that I can pass it on to you. They're just a few that I want to highlight tonight. And the first one from Northeast Campus to highlight, Jerry Zumwalt, who's been named a Fellow of the Academy of Television Arts and Sciences Foundation for the 2011 Faculty Seminar to be held in Hollywood, California this November. The fellowship is funded by the Emmys Foundation, the educational arm of the Academy Awards Program. So the academic fellowship is one of Jerry Zumwalt's Faculty Development Leave activities for 2011-12. You may remember that we have Faculty Development Leave that is available to two, at least two faculty members from each campus, if we get that many. Faculty members can apply. They go through a peer review by the other faculty members. Those faculty members recommend a faculty person to the Campus President's Panel. The President's Panel approves or disapproves of that, and if they approve, they send it to me. And the faculty members notify. They get to be gone for a year with pay, with full pay, while they develop absolutely outstanding skills that they bring back to our students here at Tarrant County College. So Jerry Zumwalt is having a wonderful time with his Faculty Development Leave. The other thing that I want to highlight is that last week, October 5th, I had the opportunity to attend a program that was held on our Trinity River Campus, but it's a Northeast Campus initiative. They hold it at Trinity River because it's centrally located, and it's for—it was a special design for Hispanic students from all over the district. And when I walked into that room at Trinity River the other night and saw that room packed with our students from all over the district, Hispanic students, and the program was led by Modesta Tulison, and also I understand Vice President Maggie de la Teja began that program last year. This was the second year. We had over 200 students there with us from all over the district. The program is called Arizondo El—El—El—Exto. El what?
Eleksto.
I hear two different things, Larry. Are you saying it right? I want to listen to Elva. Elva, how do I say it, Elva?
Mark's time. Eleksto.
Eleksto. Well, it was a wonderful—translate that for us, Mark.
It is embracing success.
Embracing success. I'm going to do better next time. But it was absolutely a wonderful program, and it's—I wanted to highlight it because it's something that all of us, all of us know, that as we move toward fulfilling our mission for the college and our achieving the dream, we know that for many of our students, we must offer additional opportunities and additional encouragement for them. So this was a program that was extremely well-done. So Dr. Darlich and staff on Northeast, thank you for your leadership of that, and also to all of the other staff members around the district. The other thing that I want to make a note of is that there are about 50 of our employees, Hispanic and otherwise, primarily Hispanic, who were there to support those students and to be role models for them. So Dr. LeBlanc, Mr. McClendon, and all of the rest of you who were in the room who were there, thank you so much for your leadership. On our Northwest Campus, I want to highlight that the Northwest Criminal Justice Training Center and the Fire Service Training Center employee cadets, employees and cadets, came together to reenact, if you will, the climb of the five-story Fire Service Training Center in honor of the 9/11 World Trade Center Tower disaster. Very moving tribute to the people who lost their lives in that tragic event. And also Northwest, the Fall 2011 Student Success Conference that they've been having for quite a long time was held on September 13th and 14th on the Northwest Campus with 650 students attending that program, including the students from Marine Creek Collegiate High School. And you'll know, this year, we have students from Fort Worth ISD joining those students from the—Lake Worth. Thank you. Lake Worth High School. So now we have two ISDs in that one early college high school. On our South Campus, our Biology faculty members, Larry Collins, Ping Shaw Sheffield, Christina Snapples, and Dr. Jean Dase Schewinski, are authors of a new lab manual called General College Biology Laboratory Manual. This second edition just came out this fall, so we're very proud of them. Jared Barton on South Campus, who is an Assistant Professor of Biology, is reviewing a couple of chapters from McGraw-Hill textbook. I mention those things to you, board members, because I want you to realize that we have such outstanding faculty members who work for us at Tarrant County College, and they are recognized all over the country. Also on South, Christina Martinez, who is an instructor of speech, and Robert Tina Hedo, instructor of English, Jennifer Jackson, Public Services Librarian, served as organizers for a read-in event in honor of Hispanic American History Month and the Hispanic American Authors' Display in our South Campus Library. Just another way of embracing the communities around us. On our—oh, South Campus just goes on and on and on, and on and on and on. I thought I was at the next campus. Southeast. Southeast Campus hosted the Streets of Mansfield on Saturday, September 10th. This was a joint venture between the Mansfield Economic Development Office and the Southeast Campus. Seventy Mansfield businesses participated in the day-long event that brought more than 500 Mansfield-area residents to the campus, and it was a very successful event. Also on Southeast, 19 faculty members from the Southeast Campus volunteered to participate in a caring behavior project this year that is based on research by the university professor—by research by University Professor Ava Miller, in which faculty will implement strategies to improve retention and outcomes, and to create workshops for success initiatives for our students. On our Trinity River Campus, last month, 58 junior and senior students from Northside High School's Gold Seal Program for the Medical Professions toured the Trinity River East Campus. I think I reported to you before that Dr. Fulkerson and her staff are lining up resources. They're already involved in the dual-credit program for the Health Professions with Fort Worth Independent School District, with the full intention of opening the second early college high school on that campus by next fall. That is our plan. So we're really excited about that. Those students were all excited after viewing the live hospital at Trinity River East Campus. And of course, speaking of Trinity River East, on October 1st, Chef Brian Stewart grilled over 1,000 hot dogs for our community visitors who came to see that facility. We had about 500 people. That's their count. My count is 1,000. I don't know what they were counting. Who came to the facility and toured it. It was an absolutely wonderful turnout for the people of Tarrant County to come and see that facility. The thing that was mostly important to me was all the children who were there. Mark, you want to add something to that?
We wanted to also thank the Fort Worth—
You need to go to the microphone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We also wanted to thank the Fort Worth Independent School District that sent us two buses of fully bilingual students, and we had one of our board member, Mrs. Vandergriff, help us through as we showed them with Dr. Fulkerson, the facilities, and there was a lot of students, I think, that would really want to take part of that.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mark. Now, for Continuing Education Services, the Association of Small Business Development Centers announced a top-five Google uptick award winners at its 31st Annual Association of Small Business Development Centers Conference, September 16th in San Diego. Brandon Jones, who is the owner of Galaxy Parties of Fort Worth, and one of our instructors from TCC Small Business Development Center, was the recipient of one of those prestigious awards, and we are very pleased about that. Also, Corporate Services has completed the first year of the Texas Skills Development Healthcare Grant with 97% completion rate. The grant provides advanced training and certificate programs for 1,500 nurses. The college is working directly with nine area hospitals to train 750 nurses located in Tarrant, Dallas, and Denton Counties, and we were awarded $771,500 for the first year of training and $106,393 for equipment. I do want to emphasize that Tarrant County College has been very fortunate in being able to be the recipient of a number of awards from the state for training programs. We do a very good job of that, and they appreciate the jobs that we do. Controller Susan Combs was here on September 16th to say thank you to us in person. She visited our Trinity River East Campus to look at the results of a Jobs and Education for Texans grant. It's called the JET Grant. They gave us money to help with some of the equipment that we have at Trinity River East Campus. She came in that day on a very tight schedule. She was going to speak to us, thank us, say a few words, and leave, and I kind of insisted that she could not leave until she saw the live hospital. So I asked her for five minutes, and she said, okay, that's fine. She ended up staying almost an hour in that facility on a tour. She was absolutely impressed. Mr. Greenhill was able to join us that day for that meeting, and we're very pleased about that. Now, the next one I have a little—you saw it earlier, she kind of got out of sync—but I wanted you to see that we accepted the Trailblazer Award for Sustainable Development of the Trinity River and the Trinity River East Campuses at the 5th Annual Downtown Fort Worth, Inc., annual luncheon, and you'll see that—that is not the right picture. But anyway, that's another award that we got. That's okay, Shelley, you weren't there, so you don't know. Reginald told me you had it all fired up. There's a video that I wanted you to play for me, because it was so impressive. I wanted the board members to see what a great job they did. This is it.
In 2001, Tarrant County College trustees committed to the construction of a college campus in the heart of Fort Worth to serve the educational and vocational needs of downtown and the north side. Construction of a downtown campus that was to span the Trinity River began in 2006, but was complicated by Hurricane Katrina and the failure of the New Orleans levees. The New Orleans disaster led to changes in the Corps of Engineers' levee design criteria and a dramatic change of TCC's plans. TCC, capitalizing on a soft market and a rare real estate opportunity, purchased the LEED Silver Certified Radio Shack Headquarters and converted 572,000 square feet of office space into a portion of their downtown campus. These extensive renovations maintained the building's Silver certification. The Trinity River East Campus opened in August of 2011 and incorporates numerous environmentally-friendly features. The outdoor plaza takes advantage of prevailing breezes— The outdoor plaza takes advantage of prevailing breezes, a large water feature, and shade to create a series of pleasant microclimates. The building also capitalizes on natural light and highly efficient mechanical systems. For their unwavering commitment to downtown and sustainable development, Downtown Fort Worth, Inc. is proud to award the Trailblazer for Sustainable Development to Tarrant County College.
Thank you very much, Shelley, for showing that. I did want it to be shown, because I think it's something, you know, we streamed this, Mr. Selective, Mr. Heat, everybody out in the world can see it, and we're so proud of wanting the whole world to see that. Both of those campuses are very special, and again, another very special thanks to Nina for leading that project to fruition, the Trinity River East Campus. The final thing that I want to tell you about from my report, and there are lots of things there that you can read, is that I was appointed to serve on the Formula Funding Advisory Committee of the Higher Education Coordinating Board. All of us know that in the next session, we are likely to get the final plans for formula, excuse me, performance-based funding. We don't know exactly what it's going to look like, but we have been given an opportunity there. About twenty of us from around the state who have been asked to serve on this committee, large institutions, small institutions, institutions that border on the border cities that also have some unique problems, and we're working really hard to come up with recommendations that we hope will be accepted by the coordinating board and passed on to the state lawmakers so that we can have some say on how we get funded. Perhaps the biggest challenge that we're going to face in formula funding is to get recognition for the good that we do with students who don't graduate, because so much of the emphasis has been placed on getting a degree or getting a certificate. And while we know that that is very, very important, we also know that it's also important when we can take a student who comes into the college reading at the fourth-grade level and get them all the way through a GED, maybe into six or nine or so credit hours of college, or get some other kind of small training, like some of the pathways that Dr. Fulkerson is developing and some of the other campuses are also developing their continuing ed to train students to do jobs that will get them above the minimum wage. So the big challenge that we're going to have is to get attention for that. We think we're on the right track with it. We're working very hard to make sure that we do get funding for what we do. The other big issue for us is going to be to get the Commission of Higher Education and our legislative lawmakers to give us incentive money to help. We've talked a lot about what it takes to educate students who come to us underprepared, and one of the proposals that I made to our group last week when we met was that we should start talking with the lawmakers about all of the additional work that must be done if we're going to be successful in serving students who come to us who are not college-ready. It's a big cost. If you look at our budget, just before we began this semester, the campus presidents and David Wells presented a plan to me to restaff our math, reading, and writing labs. Someone asked a question just recently, how much money did you save from the retirement program? And board members, you'll recall that I told you I wasn't trying to save money with that request. I wanted money to be able to repurpose things that we were doing. So we ended up, just before we started our classes, I believe, hiring an additional, how many tutors, not tutors, but instructional associates that we hired for our math labs. I don't remember what the number was, but a large number of needs. The presidents identified about a million dollars, what we needed to put in those laboratories in order to be able to help students. We didn't fund all of that. As a matter of fact, we made our first priority in math, because that's where we have the most problems. The presidents and Dr. Wells went back to the drawing board, took a look at some of the other things we were doing, rescheduled, reshuffled some things, and came back with a way to save some of that money. But we have a lot of extra money that must be spent if we're going to get the kind of results that we need to get. That's primarily because in order to serve those students, it takes a lot of additional help. Faculty members will tell you when it's time to get students from, who are not prepared, that it takes a lot of extra effort. By the way, is it in math, people in the back? Okay, that, in the north, the Halton City video, there was a person there teaching, he said developmental math. Well, if that's developmental math, it's, there is no wonder that many of our students aren't passing developmental math, because it's quite complicated. But anyway, I wanted to let you know that we're moving, we're moving ahead. We do have a really difficult situation, and also to tell you that there are a lot of things that we can do as staff, but the biggest and the most penetrating work will come from you. When we talk about the elected officials, they listen to you much more than they listen to us. They want to know from you what you think the needs are and how you can help us meet the needs of our students. So our staff are working very, very hard. Faculty members realize that they have a very different clientele in many instances today, and that's because as we push and push and push for more people to go to college, we have to remember that twenty years ago, the best students went to college. The other students got jobs in factories and other places where they could make a decent living. Those jobs are gone today. And so many students find themselves having to come to college, never thinking they would need to come, and they aren't prepared. So it takes a lot more now for us to get them ready. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Chancellor. The next item on our agenda is the president's report, and two things. One, the tours at the campus, at the trek are still going on very well. There have been several others, and I think there are two or three to come, to come up. The Leadership Fort Worth is, we're going to have, they're going to have, we, I'm a member of that club, probably some of you are too, is going to have their annual meeting there and take a tour. This is made up of leaders from all over the place, Leadership Fort Worth is, and we ought to invite, and Leadership Arlington and Mansfield, if there is one, we ought to outreach to them as well. But that's one thing that's going on. I've been on several of those tours, and we all went to the ACCT conference. As I say, the governance committee met there. We did get, you want to put up the picture? We got the award. That was the time, we got an award, the Equity Award for the Western District, and we're very, very proud of that. We got that at a dinner, and there's your, there are some of your board members there. We got our picture taken, but we're very, very proud of that, and congratulations to you all for getting that award. We all went to, I'm going to let the others speak, we all went to various sessions. We, we made a presentation, that's what we did. We made a presentation about visibility. O.K. Carter talked about, he woke up some people, he walked out there and was actually very-
I was asleep.
You were, you were, no. But Dr. Morrison gave a very, an excellent presentation about electing a chancellor. Kristin gave one about our vision 2015, a very good one. O.K. talked about, what did you talk about, O.K.? I can't remember.
Transparency.
Transparency. And I talked about communication, but if any of y'all want to pipe in about the sessions you, one of the disappointing ones I went to is how to, to, it was a session about how to build a building and how to pay for it, and it turned out that the government paid for about sixty-five percent of it, you know, a real big chance. I mean, the state and the city governments and all. So that was not a very useful one for me, but anybody else have any comments about what went on when you were there? Yeah. Yeah, you wrote some notes, I mean, you always do.
No, I just, my name was there for a report, so I-
Yeah, yeah, I'm glad you did.
ACCT is a national organization, and I was just looking at the cover of our program, and it says here, "Information is Power: Fostering Sustainability in Student Success." And truly, that's what it was all about, and the opportunity to hear from people all over the country, to visit with our other trustees in other states and to learn what they're doing was just exceptional. A couple of the sessions that I attended, I wanted to kind of share with you some statistics and some, I guess, takeaways, if you, that I thought were meaningful. First day, actually, the chancellor and I did attend the CCAT, which is the college, Community College Association of Texas Trustees with the counterparts, administrators. And there again, she segued into the same conversation that we had with Raymond Paredes, who is the commissioner of the Texas Higher Ed Coordinating Board, that there is a disconnect about the message to our legislators about what we're all, the colleges about, and so from there, we had a panel of trustees and very knowledgeable, and I just wanted to share with you some of those comments. Again, it goes back to accountability, that's going to be a big issue, completion and retention, it's all about that. Someone mentioned that the state funding for education is, has a structural deficit. They discussed the issues about developmental ed with the, I guess, the intention of maybe limiting those. And part of that discussion or comment was limiting enrollment fundamentally restricts opportunity, and so there is a real balance there. Obviously, the developmental ed costs more money and time, but we don't believe our legislators know that. There was a statistic saying that if a student comes into community college with a sixth-grade reading level, they have a four percent chance of success, which is just mind-boggling. They talked about needing different pathways to success, uniformed teaching outcomes across the state, and at the end of the day, Wright Lassiter said, you know, what value do you place on education? That's the big question. Basically, just to let you all know that Louise Appleman serves as our liaison to CCAT. We had the opportunity, they took the opportunity while we're all there to gather us, but there weren't many there, and we need to encourage more trustees to go, because it's just what the chancellor was saying, the legislators need to hear from us, and we need to know what the issues are. So I really encourage you all to make a point to attend all these different offerings we have. Another session I attended was Retention Is the Bottom Line by Western Iowa Tech and Data Tal. They have a different situation, they have declining enrollments. So they set out to increase retentions by developing retention liaisons. They paid adjuncts or peers two thousand dollars a semester to track the students and become their liaison, and so if they had a day-by-day count of who was dropping, and they would get a call in the next twenty-four hours. Now, I've talked to Mr. McClendon, and they have a college of six thousand people with fifteen liaisons, so we'd have to adapt it to ours differently. But again, we're doing the same things with that intensified counseling. They had an interesting statistic. Sixty-five percent of post-secondary faculty are teaching the way they were taught, and today only twelve percent students learn that way. So we've got to change our ways. We are changing our ways. The other one I attended was fundraising, the board members' role in fundraising. And this was presented by Seminole State College in Florida, and they take the attitude for board members, give-get-or-get-off attitude. So if you all haven't given to the TCC Foundation, I encourage you to do so. They also said that we should have unbridled enthusiasm for our college, and when you ascertain potential gifts or contributors, you'll get more dollars if they have the ability to give the interest and a linkage to the college. So the last comment was, some people have deep pockets, but very short arms. We did have a keynote at lunch from the Carnegie Foundation, I cannot remember his name, but they're very instrumental in developing the Pell Grants and innovation in different curriculum. They introduced the concept of different math pathways. Not everybody needs to do quadratic equations, that I know Dr. Darlage knows well, but they're looking to teach math that's more applicable day-to-day, business, check balancing, and so forth, not to undermine the scope of the STEM curriculum, but anyway, that was, that was a new concept to me. I don't know if you'd all heard it before. The other comment he made is that developmental math students have math scar tissue, meaning as they grew up, somebody told them they'd never succeed in math, and so somehow we have to undo that, because you know that with practice and diligence and study, we can get that done. Also, his statement was, those who get the best jobs have taken the most math. So anyway, I thought that was interesting. Nonetheless, it was a great opportunity to meet with people. The Equity Award was a special thing, there were three of us from the region, so thank you for letting us go.
Thank you. Kristin, anybody else have any comments about the conference? Well, Louise has been busy, too, and I would like to hear, you've got a report?
Very quickly, but I did want to call your attention under tone and transparency in the item column on the left side of your screen. The Communications Department did a very nice job of capturing your visit to Dallas and outlining some of the things you've told us tonight. I have three quick things to tell you about, and I'm going to start at the bottom. Developmental Education Institute, tomorrow, we will be meeting on the Trinity River Campus to talk about developmental education, which we've heard several times tonight, so there will be a report about that next meeting. I will be going, and the chancellor will be giving a greeting at that meeting. I attached to the, or asked Reginald to attach to the collection of data in your packet, a list I received recently when I represented you at the Workforce Development Board. They put out a list of Tarrant County target occupations, and I was very pleased to see that many of those are in our book of curriculum, and I thought you might be interested in seeing that. And lastly, the first piece of my report, and I'm going backwards tonight, is the Community College Survey of Student Engagement. Shelley, I'm sorry I'm doing this to you. This is to test your agility over there with the keys. This is, if you like data and charts and graph, bar graphs, you're going to love this report. It goes on and on, but it's an interesting comparison of Tarrant County College to what they call cohort colleges, which means colleges similar to us. And it basically has five benchmarks, learning, support for that learning, the students' efforts in learning, the academic challenges that are given to them, and finally, but not last, certainly at the top of the page, is the student-faculty interaction. So take some time to look at that, because this is what our Achieving the Dream efforts are all about, and I just had to share this interesting report with you, so thank you.
Mr. Greenhill, if I may add one thing, I really hope you will study this. This is something that really should interest you. This is something that, that really should interest you, because it is not only data from Tarrant County College district, it's data from around the country, and it also, it's also data, it's grouped by what they call top-performing colleges. And meeting with my staff today at lunch, I said something about various things that I want to do. I said, "You know, Tarrant County College is a great place, and we do a lot of wonderful things, but there are still other things that we can do and other things that we want to do." And I especially wanted to say that tonight, we have our JCC members here, and I'm always begging them to take the word back, because sometimes the faculty misinterpret what I say. And I know they do, because things get back to me that they say it. I know they don't understand exactly what I mean, but, and it isn't that I'm not appreciative of what we do, I am. It's just that I'm always saying, with all these resources we have, we just need to make sure that we're doing everything we can to maximize them. And when we look at data like this, it gives us more incentive, I think, to work even smarter or harder, whichever one it is we need to do, in order to increase our success levels. Generally speaking, community colleges pretty much look the same around the country. We all have pretty much the same challenges, and it's just a matter of how resources are used, what kind of training we do for our faculty and for our staff. And you heard me say before, I put in the budget this year half million dollars for faculty and staff development. We're very serious about making sure, Mrs. Van De Grift mentioned, it said 65 percent of the people who are teaching today teach the way they were taught, and about 4 percent of the students, 12 percent of the students learn that way, which we have a really big gap that we have to close. And so I just wanted to say to board members, and want to say publicly to everybody, that this isn't about degrading what anybody is doing. We have outstanding faculty, and I say that all the time. I can never say it enough, but I can also never say enough that we're going to continue to work really hard so that we can be even better at what we do. It just happens that Dr. Joe Rhodes is in the audience tonight, and he is the keeper of all things cess and censy. He does this work for us. Dr. Rhodes, is there anything you want to tell the board about this great project, since we're talking about it? If you're going to say anything, you have to come to the microphone. Walk fast. I'm always calling on people, and they don't know I'm going to call on them. It's kind of dangerous to come to one of these board meetings without...
I'd just like to say, when you read the data, remember we're in year two of a five-year project, so the results are only going to get better. I promise. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it, Mr. Greenhill.
Well, thank you all for coming, and we're going to close this meeting. First, I want to congratulate Dennis Heed for being elected, and Dennis Schlechter, I mean, and Mr. Schlechter, Dennis Schlechter Conrad Heed. Thank you so much for both of you participating in this process. It's been, thank you very much, and I'll talk to you later. Now, we're going to go into a closed meeting. Deliberation of Real Property Section 551-072, Texas Government Code. The real property discussion will address acquisition of property near property already owned by the college district. We're also going to deliberate on personnel matters, Section 551-074, Texas Government Code. The deliberation will include discussion on candidates for the position of president at the South Campus and the Southeast Campus. Then the third thing will be deliberation of pending contemplated litigation, 551-071, Texas Government Code. And no, the good news is, I don't believe we're going to have any action items after.
No.
So you guys are, just can go home. Thank you all for coming. We're adjourned. Oh, no, we're not adjourned.